Welcome to the June 22, 2021 regular meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Toffnelli, will you please lead the pledge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Join me in the pledge to our flag of our name and my pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public. Do we have staff announcements?
Yes, good morning Chair Stoppa, respective board members, Deputy Clerk of the Board, and our Calaveras community, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. During heat events, when our partners with Public Health and OES open up our cooling centers, we wanted to let our community know that Animal Services will hold your dog or cat for free during the period of the event and while you are at the cooling center. Just like any other dog or cat that comes into our shelter, they will receive standard vaccines, which include the DHLPP, which includes the Distemper, infectious hepatitis, parainfluenza, and parvo, and also Bordatella for our pups. Cats will receive FERCP, which includes the feline rhinotarctitis, the calisi virus, and also the panlocupinia. We will not apply flea or tick medication or give rabies vaccines. You can come to our clinics for the free rabies vaccines. If your pet is on a special diet or needs medications, please provide them and bring them to the cooling center. Please provide and call Animal Services two hours before you need to go to the cooling center, and one of our Animal Service officers will respond to schedule the pickup. Our next free rabies clinic is in September. That's a long summer month, but we hope to see you at Spence Ranch Fetus Supply in Angels Camp on September 4th from 9 to noon. These announcements will also be shared with our local media and through social media as well. Please visit our Animal Services Facebook to look at our adoptive animals. Thank you.
Further staff comments?
I have an announcement this morning for the board. Good morning, Board. I'm happy to see you, even though not in person. I just wanted to report to you about our summer programs here at the library and give you a report at the end of our first week. We are doing, as you know, lunch at the library again this summer, and in our four sites that we are distributing food, we've distributed 587 lunches last year, last week, to children and families who we hope that this, who that we hope are helping in these difficult times. In addition, we've begun our summer reading takeaway packets. We did this again this year with packets for five different age groups, 0 to 2, ages 3 to 5, and then K through grade 2, and then grades 3, 4, and grades 5, 6, 7. With each packet has a book and activities for the children to be involved in. As you know, libraries try to bridge the reading gap that many children experience and the learning gaps, all of the learning gaps that they experience in the summer. And so we are trying to bridge this gap and help parents keep their children on track after a couple of difficult school years. So we ordered materials and we're ready for 461 children this summer, raising our numbers by almost 100 over last year. But as of yesterday, we have 523 children enrolled in our program. So we are really scrambling here at the library to put together more packets so that we can serve the needs of our community. But I believe that the library is helping our county this summer. Last Friday, we were a cooling site, a lunch site, a vaccination site, and we were also doing our summer reading. So we're happy to be here, we're happy to serve the public and help in any way that we can.
Welcome to the June 22, 2021 regular meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. So that's what I sound like, Nancy. Thank you, Nancy. If there's no further staff announcements, we'll move on to the public health update. Informational item, Public Health Services, receive an update presentation from staff on COVID-19 novel coronavirus. How's it going?
Good morning, Chairman Stoppa, Members of the Board, Corey Allen with the Health and Human Services Agency. Working with me today during our presentation will be Dr. Ramirez, and of course, your Public Health Deputy Director, Colleen Rodriguez, who's helping with the slides today to keep us moving along. All right, so today, let's give you a June 22 update. So what you'll see here is we are now at 2,207 total confirmed cases. Five of those are active as of, as of yesterday. Of tests conducted, we have completed 45,344 tests, and 36,706 vaccines have been administered. We've recovered with 2,146 individuals and have remained static in the numbers of deaths due to the COVID-19. We no longer track the tier colors, and therefore, you will have limited data sets moving forward. We will focus on vaccine. So the vaccine metrics, presently, we have 42.5% of your residents are completely vaccinated. 9.5% are waiting on their second dose or have not completed that. So that leaves us with just under half of our residents unvaccinated at this time.
Corey, is that, is that 6 and above?
That would be, Colleen, I believe that... I have Colleen to respond. I thought that would be 12 and above, but let me see.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question. Can you repeat that?
The population, is that six years old and older or a different age bracket?
No, the population, the eligible population is 12 years old and over.
Yes. Okay, thank you so much for that confirmation. Next slide. So what's really critical for us moving forward is continuing with those safety measures with the new post blueprint format. Basically, there's some general do's and don'ts. We do ask people to wear a mask if they're unvaccinated, especially in crowded indoor spaces. Follow the safety rules if you attend a mega event. Test it if you feel sick. Wear a mask while on public transit, even if you're vaccinated. And of course, honor the mask and distancing rules in place that private businesses do put in place for us. We ask that we get tested if required by your workplace and wearing a mask when you travel. Things to remember not to do. Don't expect others to be ready for hugging and shaking hands just yet. Don't lose the proof of vaccination, maybe even put it on your phone as a photo so you have that as backup. Don't think that you can't get the virus or pass it on just because you feel well, and don't assume everyone is vaccinated. We hope that you'll expect all COVID-19 rules everywhere. Don't expect them all to be lifted all at the same time, and please don't travel if you're feeling sick. Vaccine clinics that are coming up starting tomorrow will be in Murphy's at the Bright Station. The address there is for you. That will be in the evening hours, 6:30 to 8:30. You can move into Murphy's June 24 at the Diggins Mobile Park, and that will be in the morning hours from 9 to 12. Angels Camp on the 25th and McCullough Hill on June 26. The 27th will be back in Murphy's at the library. All of this information can be found on the county website. And of course, remember, if you want to go ahead and get that vaccine, you can go to the myturn.ca.gov. Now, with us today, we do have Dr. Ramirez, our Health Officer, who may want to offer more information.
Good morning, Calaveras County. Just want to reiterate to everybody again the importance of vaccines. Vaccines save lives, and as we go forth in this year, and as I continue to work in the emergency department, the people that we're starting to see coming in are with COVID-like symptoms, are majority, if not all, are all unvaccinated individuals. I have yet to see a vaccinated person for COVID come in for complications due to COVID. So vaccines work. Just think, when's the last time you've seen polio? When's the last time you've seen chickenpox? Vaccines work, vaccines save lives. Please help us to save lives. Does anybody have any questions?
Board members? Mr. Garamindie.
Thank you, Corey, thank you, Dr. Ramirez. When you, are there, 48% of our population is vaccinated roughly on the way. Are there pockets that we need to consider? I mean, I know you've been doing a lot of outreach to some of my rural areas that I represent, so there are opportunities, but are there, is it concentrated or is it just across the board?
There are, I mean, there's going to be a variety, a variety of individuals or pockets, but I don't have that data. What I do want to share with you is that there are pockets that are resistant to even allowing the mobile van to come into their sort of area. That's been a concern of ours, that mobile van, its intention was to deliver vaccine to those areas where it may be otherwise hard to access. We have asked and made requests to bring that mobile van to places and have been denied and declined access. So I think that is the greater concern, is just the general resistance to even bringing access.
Interesting, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further board questions? With that, we'll move to public comment if there's nothing else in. Mr. Archer? Nothing to report? No, all right. We can go back to it if you have questions after public comment.
Judy Hawkins would like to make a comment.
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Judy.
Good morning, Members of the Board, Mr. Chair. I do want to just go ahead and give you a quick update on the Cal OSHA changes and what we will be rolling, or what we are rolling out to our employees as far as the changes to the face covering mandates, the social distancing mandates, and then our obligation to document vaccinated employees. So of course, on June 17, Cal OSHA met and revised their emergency temporary standards, which we all knowingly, lovingly know as our CPP, our Coronavirus Prevention Plan. And so the substantial changes to their regulations is we no longer, if you are fully vaccinated, you no longer have to wear a face covering in the workplace. And there are a couple, of course, exceptions to that rule if you are in a healthcare setting, also if you are in a correctional facility, working in a correctional facility, and if you are working in an emergency or shelter such as our cooling center. And so in, under those situations, if you're, even if you're vaccinated, you'll be required to wear a face covering. Also, our social distancing, if you are, we are not required to mandate the social distancing, and we can take down partitions, but I do not recommend that at this time because if we were to have an outbreak, then we would need to put some of those partitions back in place. One of the big pieces of these, of this mandate is that we do have to, we do have to have some type of documentation. We have an obligation under the Cal OSHA rules to have documentation on all of our employees regarding their vaccination status. We are going to allow for self attestation. We do have a form for the employees to fill out. In fact, the Board will receive that form for you to fill out, and then HR will keep this form on file. I would also like to point out, and County Council can back it, back this up, vaccination status is not HIPAA-protected information. And so asking employees to provide us with this information, we are not violating any HIPAA rules. This is not HIPAA-protected information. We are keeping the information secure, you know, along with all of the other protected files that we have, such as workers' comp, but it is not HIPAA-protected information. If an employee refuses to fill out the self attestation, then we treat them as unvaccinated. Are there any questions?
No, thank you, Judy.
All right, thank you.
Any further public comment?
I do have one on the line. Carl, if you'd like to make your comment now, if you may, go ahead.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, staff and Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. To reiterate with the Health Department and set, and I thank them very much for saying it, the weekly group hug that you engage in is still off. Do not attempt to hug me. I would like to, to ask, have the Board ask of Public Health to have a vaccination, a mini vaccination clinic in West Point. I have the first dose of the Moderna vaccine, and I would like the second dose. I understand that there are five doses per, per vial, so if you can get five people together any day but Thursday, I am available. Thank you. Back to you.
Thank you. Will that be all?
There are no further public comments.
With that, I'll bring it back to the Board. Oh, my apologies, my apologies, audience, please.
There's three of us.
My apologies.
Not a problem. I have copies of what I'm saying, if anybody, for the Board, or do you want more?
Yes. Is this on the public health update?
Nope.
Okay, that, we'll go to general public comment. This is specifically on the public health issue, so we'll come back to that.
Okay, now we're focused.
Thank you. Ms. Coway, you had a few questions?
Yes. Ms. Allen or Dr. Ramirez, have we seen any cases with the new variant?
That would be a question Dr. Ramirez will be able to answer.
There have been reports of the variant circulating in Calaveras County and throughout the state of California.
But we have...
It actually, it actually makes me concerned because we don't have enough of the positive cases that actually get typed to get a true sense of how much there is. So the fact that we just have even one case of a variant, that's just the tip of the iceberg.
Okay, thank you. And when you report the cases, I know we've had this discussion offline, is there any way we could give a little more information, like we had a female 40s case? And I know we're always being compared to your alma mater. You know, the public really wants more information, and I think because we're doing it the same, the same, it loses its effectiveness unless we take it up a notch.
I understand.
I guess I'd like you to consider that.
I understand, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Andrea.
I just have a quick question, and if Ms. Hawkins wants to follow up with me offline, that's fine. We might need some clarification on healthcare, right? Some healthcare doesn't always include hospital settings or clinic settings, sometimes it can include mental health workers, things along those lines for masking guidelines. So we might need some direction for our employees who work in the Behavioral Health Services, things along those lines, because they may be considered healthcare workers and they may fall under these new masking guidelines. So I just, we might need to follow up offline, Ms. Hawkins, if need be, or if you already have that kind of clear delineation of what is considered healthcare workers and what is, is not considered a healthcare worker.
So I have been working on getting clarification on the, because I believe it states healthcare settings, on exactly what that means, and I will be following up with SEIU on exactly what areas that would affect.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments by the Board members? Thank you, Dr. Ramirez, thank you, Ms. Allen. My apologies. Recognition and acknowledgements. Proclamation, Health and Human Services Agency, adopt a proclamation recognizing June 2021 as World Elder Abuse Awareness Month. Mr. Garamindie.
Sure. All right, I'll start away. Thank you very much, Mr. Thank you. Thank you very much. It's my honor to read the proclamation recognizing June 2021 as World Elder Abuse Awareness Month in Calaveras County. We stand against elder abuse. Whereas, World Elder Abuse Awareness Day began on June 15, 2006, by the International Network for the Prevention of Elder Abuse and the World Health Organization at the Nine Nations. And whereas in California, Adult Protective Services receives as many as 10,000 reports of elder and dependent adult abuse per month, and reports are increasing. That is an estimated 120,000 cases reported elder abuse and dependent adult abuse per year in California. Whereas, Calaveras County includes a population of 28% of elders aged 65 and older, who are our friends, neighbors, parents, and/or grandparents. And whereas, Calaveras County recognizes that older Americans have the right to be safe in their homes and communities. And whereas, Calaveras County is committed to helping all individuals live longer and healthier lives. And whereas, World Elder Abuse Awareness Month is an opportunity for Calaveras County to promote a better understanding of abuse and neglect of older persons by raising community awareness. Are there any public comments?
Hi, good morning. Good morning, Chairman Stoppa and Members of the Board. My name is Susan Gleason, and I am the Supervisor of Adult Services here in Calaveras County, and I want to thank you for recognizing June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month. As stated in the proclamation, 28% of the population in Calaveras County is over the age of 65. And we investigate roughly 250-plus cases of elder abuse each year. That in blue, abuse consists of self neglect, neglect by others, physical abuse, financial abuse, isolation, or some form of mental abuse. You know, the, the goal of APS is to create a stable environment so that the individual can remain safely in their home. So, you know, what does that look like? Oftentimes, it includes providing resources for that individual or that family so that they can remain safely in their home with those resources. You know, I really want to give a shout out to my staff for the amazing work that they do every single day, going out in the community, working with families, connecting them to resources. I could stand here probably all day and highlight the work that they do with connecting them to, you know, Medi-Cal, getting them connected to in-home support services so that, you know, they have a caregiver that can support them in the home so that they can remain safely in their home. But before I go, I just kind of want to highlight a particular case that we worked on recently within our community. We had an elder who, she recently lost her husband, and so she was having some struggles. And, you know, the worker was very diligent and was working with her, getting her resources in the home. As we all know, COVID has been challenging. However, through those challenges, our community has many strengths. And so I want to kind of highlight a couple of strengths that we saw working with this family. One of the strengths is connecting to community resources. Everybody was able to pitch in and help, getting her connected to Medi-Cal to get some support in the home through, you know, in-home support services. And grocery stores, you know, our local grocery stores were a great resource that we found during COVID. They were able to set up curbside pickup, home deliveries, and, you know, that's, that's huge, especially for this particular case, because there are occasions where this individual was not able to drive. So having that resource and being able to, you know, put that into place between, you know, our agency working with her and then our local grocery stores working with her, it was kind of a very win-win situation for everybody. And I just kind of want to leave you with this. I'm a parent, I have three adult children, and, you know, I heard the phrase a lot when I was raising my children, it takes a village. And I feel like it takes a village, working with our senior population, connecting them to resources, getting them the support they need. This individual, she finally opened up to us and allowed us to contact her family because she did not want to burden her family. She did not want them to know that she was having a struggle, and so we were able to convince her the benefit of having that support, because her family was willing to support her. But, you know, as we get older, we want to be independent, we don't, we don't want to rely on our children, we don't want to rely on families because we feel like we're a burden to them. And so we were able to actually bring her in and bring the family in and provide that support. And, you know, at the, at the end of the day, this family was very thankful for the support and the guidance that was shown, and the client, at the very end of the day, was actually very supportive and happy that we were able to reconnect her with her family and get that support that she needed. So again, I just want to thank you for recognizing June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month, and that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Gleason. Any further comments, Board members? Public?
I may have one public comment on the line. Carl, you're unmuted if you'd like to make a comment.
Good morning once again. I'd like to thank the Board for considering this proclamation, and also remind the Board that when you, by not providing signage with cooling centers on hot days needed, you are, you are in the act of abusing an elder, perhaps. While 28% of our population is elderly, a lot of them are of limited means, a lot of them don't have air conditioning, backed up generators. It is necessary, absolutely necessary, that you make sure that you provide that opportunity, and you are not providing that opportunity when you do not provide adequate advertising for those cooling stations. Thank you, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Stoppa. Any further comments, public comments? No? I'll bring it back to the Board, and Mr. Garamindie, you want to go for the motion?
I'd love to make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Mr. Toffnelli. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Passes on five of the vote of the Board, Mr. Garamindie.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Gleason, and all the team in HHS that works so hard to protect most vulnerable populations. Really appreciate, we value our elders, so thank you. And therefore, be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Calaveras proclaims June 2021 as World Elder Abuse Awareness Month in Calaveras County. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up, Court.
Hi.
You might have to...
No.
That's not a good color.
I was just wondering.
Two, three.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Much work.
Thank you, Ms. Gleason.
Thank you.
Good to see you. You know, involved in the community still. General public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined by, to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. Public comment. Sorry, pass this on.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
May I take this mask off? Hi, I'm Debbie Beaufort McKelamy Hill, and I'm here for Friends of Calaveras Animal Services. A couple of months ago, Gina Gonzalez, who's the president of, excuse me, Calaveras Animal Disaster, which is CAD, it's their acronym, and I were summoned to a meeting with William Oglesby, who's the manager of Calaveras County Animal Services. William proposed a joint venture of the three groups to, quote, "raise the barn." The idea is to get a permanent livestock area for animal services, including a barn. Most people think animal services only deals with dogs and cats, but that is a total misconception. In many, in the many years I have volunteered, there have been horses, goats, sheep, pigs, emus, chickens, fighting cocks, rabbits, and some but not many reptiles. It was decided that a six-stall barn would be the beginning of a permanent livestock area. In addition, FOCUS has expanded the idea to include three, two or three or four shelter sheds, you know, little teeny things, and panel fencing for each. CADs and FOCUS have pledged to work together and get this done. The idea is the county put in a pad for the barn and leveled three or four areas for livestock sheds and bring in the needed electricity and water. And CADs and FOCUS raised the funds and erected the barn and the sheds. There is a but. We don't want to spend the time and effort to do this if the entire area of animal services is not properly fenced. This has always been a major drawback at the shelter. The lack of fencing is dangerous for the animals and the humans that care for them. Over the years, many dogs have totally escaped, never to be found again. A fence is a must for livestock and for the dogs. The question is, is the county willing to get the entire 6.9 acres properly fenced with locking gates at Jeff Tuttle Drive and Murray Creek Road, large enough to allow for vehicles to access the building underneath shelter? And secure the entire area. Over the years, members of the public have easily accessed the area and retrieved their animals by stealing them back. Animals in custody are not presently, nor have they ever been, secure. Can we count on the county to do its part? If so, then I figure we have a great group to get all this done and secure all the stray unwanted and abused animals of the county. FOCUS has proven it can get the job done. We got the cat houses moved down from Hazel Fisher School, refurbished them from schoolrooms into the facility for housing for cats, including medical and intake. All done in eight months.
Thank, thank you. Do you have someone you could pass that on to to finish? Or are you, did you get it in its entirety?
No, I just, I have one sentence left. It just says, "Please commit to the total fencing, pad construction, and infrastructure, and we will get the buildings purchased and set up." Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Well, I won't finish it for her. She just finished. Good morning, everyone. My name is Christine Albertine, and I've been a resident of Calaveras County for 21-plus years. I recently retired from state service, and I was looking for a group that might do something to meet my interests. And friends of mine told me about FOCUS and the wonderful work they were doing with animal services. As a result, I joined FOCUS, and I'm excited to work with them in their efforts in conjunction with the Board of Supervisors for a new shelter. I see this as a critical need, especially as the county continues to grow in population, both human and animal. I'd like to briefly focus on the needs of sheltering cats and kittens. Approximately 41 cats and kittens are currently being housed in the shelter. However, they're scattered all over the place. Some are in animal services office, some are in the FOCUS building, some are in the community rooms, and the rest are in cages. Furthermore, it was my understanding that some had to be turned away because there was just no room. In addition, the animal shelter is not conducive for having shelter animals meet their potential new families. I would hope that in your discussions and planning for improvements in the current shelter, and more hopefully, a brand-new shelter, that this issue can be addressed. Now might be the time to consider placing a bond on the ballot to help pay the cost of a brand-new shelter, one that the county can be proud of now and in the future. Thank you. And then, if that wasn't enough, I'll pass this out to.
Thank you.
You're welcome. There we go.
All right, I've got copies too. Hi, everybody. My name is Darcie Zimmerman, and I live in Vallesito. I first became acquainted with animal services facility back in the last century when I adopted my first dog from a shelter and have been active on and off with the Humane Society and now FOCUS ever since. The condition of the facility has been a constant concern during all this time, as attested to in the dozens of brand jury reports over the years. First, I have to say I'm thrilled to know that the Board of Supervisors has recognized the need to make a commitment to improving the facility with the $600,000 in the next year's budget. With that in mind, I'm here to ask that any improvements are done with thought and compassion. Putting up a building, which is what I'm assuming is going to happen with some of that money, is just the beginning. It's my hope that the comfort and safety of our county's most vulnerable creatures is first and foremost when planning improvements to the facility. During our FOCUS meetings, in which we discuss ways in which to support the care and comfort of the shelter animals, we have identified some areas of concern that I hope you will take into consideration. First, please consider fencing the entire area. Not only will it keep the shelter animals safe from escaping, but it will keep them safe from other animals and humans that might enter the area and do harm. Second, the animals that are housed in the shelter need to be warm in the summer, and, sorry, warm in the winter and cool in the summer. We have heard through the grapevine that a metal building is being considered, and so heating and cooling may prove to be more of a challenge than in a more traditional building. Third, the noise level in a metal building may, may increase the stress level of the animals that are housed there, making them more difficult to adopt. Volunteers and staff work hard with the animals to get them into loving homes, and any extra stress would be counterproductive. Fourth, the sanitation of a dog kennel has issues specific to a shelter. I'm hoping that this will be done right and result in any of the issues that the current facility has with its open sewer. Hopefully, there will be a place for puppies away from the general population, a quarantine area for sick dogs, and a special space for small dogs. These considerations would all be appropriately addressed were you to hire a shelter architect, a person specifically schooled in these areas right off the bat to help the implementation of an animal shelter that will stand the test of time. I know that there are lots of resources out there that could help in the planning of a new facility. You're so lucky to have a shelter manager right now who can direct you towards those resources. That's it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Zimmerman. Ms. Colaway?
FOCUS, I want to see you on July 3.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We got balloons.
Further comment?
Quick question. Clarification first. I'm sorry, I got here a couple minutes late. I'm not sure if we're speaking to the entire agenda or this item specific.
This is just public comment, not to do with anything on the agenda.
So I have a public comment. First, I want to just say that the first goat that we ever procured, we adopted through the shelter. Elvis, who's still on our property, is our first goat. We now have about 45, so. Secondly, one of my, yeah, well, yeah, we always need more, but we're looking to get up to around 200, hopefully. Anyway, the second appreciation I'll give, shout out to these guys, is one of our bucks was probably a bottle-fed buck who we also adopted from somebody else and who, before we triply reinforced the fence between us and the MACT clinic, would like to break out of his area and go over and see if he could get some attention from the clinic participants, mostly, oh, and he has, he has horns out to about here. And he's about 350 pounds. And he would look in people's car window as they pulled up, and they'd be like, "I'm not getting out." And so I had to go over and retrieve him, as did these guys once when they didn't know who to call at first. So I had to retrieve him, and I did not break him out of jail. I paid his, his bail, and we got him out. And he's been a good boy mostly since then. So, secondly, I just want to ask a quick question of everybody in here that semi pertains to some agenda items. And just think about this. I read a story that people in Texas that want to buy a Tesla are going to have to wait on the current law until Tesla takes their vehicles from the plant in Texas, hauls them out of state, so that then a Texan can buy them in-state. That's actually a law right now that they're looking at in Texas. Does that make sense to anybody? It doesn't make sense to me. My point to this is, I, you might have recognized me as somebody that has spoken about the cannabis ordinance that we have. And I just want you to think about the fact that we've already adopted the fact that agricultural cannabis is legal in this county, and it's happening. And we all have, also have dispensary. But this whole concept from seed to sale in the laws also should apply to our industry. We should look at supporting the accessory industries and the jobs that they can bring to our county. I know. I'll speak later.
We'll see you later then. You know, it's good to see the public back in here.
My turn?
If you want.
Okay. I don't know if I can follow the story with the buck, but I'll, but I'll try.
Thanks for livening it up.
Yes. Now I get to bring you back down. All right. Well, good morning. My name's Andrea Colavita Pinkham, and I am the field representative from SEIU 1021 for Calaveras County. This morning, I'm here to speak about the upcoming negotiations for our successor agreement to deliver a fair and equitable contract before expiration. My team and I need to meet. Unfortunately, the length of preparations will drag out the length of negotiations. And that will not serve the membership, nor the community. Does the county's paid negotiator have to write all his proposals during lunch and after work? If he doesn't, why should your employees? Current law supports that bargaining preparation is part of negotiations. And workers should be granted the same rights to participate as they do during regular negotiations. I'm not unreasonable. And I'm willing to work with HR and the department heads to schedule time in such a way to have the least possible impact on the affected departments. However, the work has to get done. Negotiations are serious. This team is taking the responsibility for this agreement seriously. It's time for the county to take this seriously and not hold their employees to a different standard than one of their contract workers, which they're paying quite a bit of money for. We're not the enemy. We are your partners. Work with us to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Further public comment?
I have one online.
Thank you.
Mr. Stoughton, may I go ahead?
Mr. Stoughton, can we hear you?
I can hear you.
I can hear you now.
As you may know, for the past two years, Krista Van Latta has instigated a policy of non-recognition of me, a basic human right to recognize me, even on my loyalty, which I am. She has violated. Krista Van Latta was hired under suspicious circumstances. I had questions for her, but this was railroaded through to hire me. She had made promises to department heads, and to, assuming you. I have some questions for Mrs. Van Latta, the CIO of Calaveras County, that I would like to pose to you, to ask of her, and for her to directly email me. The only email I've received from Krista Van Latta is an inappropriate emoji in the last two years. Here are the questions. Before I begin, I can only assume that Judy Hawkins loaded the CIO hiring process in Latta's favor since she never answered any of my questions during the hiring period. Gee, Hawkins, really should seek other employment. I have a number of grievances with the job she has done, not only related to hiring. Due to this, I can extend that assumption to include that Latta will not be critical of Hawkins' performance, seeing as she basically is making Van Latta the CIO. Questions for Van Latta. One, the CIO's position requires contact with the public, one-on-one, and also in group settings, i.e. district public meetings, projects, public meetings, and basic get-to-know-you head-of-county government events and interviews. It is well-known that Van Latta has poor people skills outside of the known and retiring individuals of the county, department heads, in other words, and the supervisors. How does Latta overcome this handicap, for lack of a better word, in order to serve the county and for the supervisors? Would she be open to tutoring or attending a class to help with this problem? You have worked under, you, Van Latta, have worked under two CIOs and one short-term interim CIO, with the interim being the only competent and knowledgeable CIO of these. Considering your lack of long-term, comprehensive experience in a functioning county government, which is always a prerequisite for candidacy, for candidates for the position of CIO, CEO for governments, and lack of experience in county government and other departments, A, will you be seeking outside consultants to help with projects that you and your staff do not have or have very limited experience with? Or will you be, as you have been, a learn-as-you-go, perhaps make mistakes, possibly late, and with limited results CIO? B, will you be open to regularly scheduled performance audits of the administrative department by outside consultants?
Mr. Stoughton, thank you very much for, thank you very much for your three minutes. Any further public comments?
No, there is none.
With that, we'll move into a 10-minute break. Welcome back. We'll be going on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Any board members that would like to remove any items? Any staff members that would like to remove any items? Any members of the public?
Carl, you're live. If you'd like to make a comment on the consent agenda.
I will be pulling for further discussion items six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight.
Mr. Stoughton, you have legitimate comments to each and every one of those items?
As I said in my email, yes, I do.
With that, in the interest of those making presentations today, we're going to go and move the consent agenda to after the regular meeting, so we can stay to our schedule with regular meeting items, sir. Thank you. Regular agenda. Informational item. OES. Receive a tree mortality program implementation update from TSS Consultants. Mr. Osborne.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and honorable board members. John Osborne, your Director of Emergency Services. Let me turn on my camera. I apologize, my camera's not working, but if I can screen share. Okay, everybody should be seeing a slide presentation with project summary. Can everyone see that? Great, thank you. Again, apologize for the lack of camera. We come before you this morning to provide you with the tree mortality implementation program update, as is our regular battle rhythm with this presentation. I'll introduce our program manager, Chad Mason from TSS Consultants. Chad, are you on, sir?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great. So with that, I'll just launch into our short slide deck. We have five slides for this quarterly report. Of course, this project began October of 2017, and since that time, we have mitigated a little over ten thousand trees across thirty-five projects. We currently have one project in play at Big Trees Village. The slide here notes it'll be done in early June. Actually, due to an out-of-state death in the contractor's family, it's been slightly postponed. The project will be completed early next week. At the close of that project, we will have completed thirty-six projects, all with minimal damage to private property, no damage to county roads or infrastructure, and, very importantly, no worker injuries. Working around heavy equipment and chainsaws, et cetera, we're very pleased with our contractors and their safety record. With the completion of all thirty-six projects, we will have addressed tree mortality both east and west of Highway forty-nine, all the way up to the county line, and we've done so, in some cases, with four separate surveys across the properties. Following completion of our projects, of course, we work closely with OES to submit reimbursement to CALOES, and we'll look at a summary of those reimbursements on the last slide of this deck. Next slide, John? Unfortunately, and this isn't too surprising, I know for many of the folks sitting in on the meeting today, the drought conditions continue, and as foresters, we keep an eye on what's going on in the forest ecosystems around us, and we're seeing quite a few dead conifer trees, pines, Douglas fir, white fir, gray pine, oaks, some oaks, and cedars. But mostly, it's the conifers that are taking the hit right now, and it's not surprising with the drought stress. Also, we are seeing additional beetle attack within these stands. As far as this tree removal process, while it's very helpful to remove these hazardous trees that may land on public roads and private properties, but we're also mitigating wildfire behavior. Of course, these road systems also serve as egress or ingress for residents leaving wildfire situations or suppression assets trying to access. So while tree mortality continues, we strongly recommend that the county continue supporting this program as we go forward. Next slide. These are some additional images of some of the fading that we're seeing in the pines and the conifers in general. Next slide. So we're recommending that later this summer, after we've seen some of the beetle flights emerge, if you will, we conduct another survey and consider another round of tree mitigation, tree removals. This would likely happen August, September. Working closely with OES, of course, we'll time it appropriately. Lastly, as far as this slide goes, we have sent out over three-thousand write-of-entry forms of those. We've got pretty good response, a little over sixty percent. There are still nine hundred write-of-entry forms we have never received back signed. So with our next survey, we'll be reconnecting with many of these landowners, depending on the fate, the current status, if you will, of their trees and the tree mortality. Last slide, John? I know this is a busy slide, but it really does summarize the financial outlay by the county and by the state, as well as CAL FIRE. Bottom line is, the county expenditure project to date has been a little over fifty-six thousand dollars. When you consider the slightly over ten thousand trees removed, the county is out about six dollars per tree, pretty good return on investment. And with that, John, I'll hand the microphone back to you.
Thank you, Chad. Appreciate your insight there. One of the things that is not included in this last slide that you'll see is, we did receive a pinch over sixty-eight thousand dollars from CAL FIRE for their local assistance tree mortality second round, and that will further offset our per-cost tree, which stands at about five dollars and fifty-six cents right now per tree mitigated. We'll be requesting those funds in our next DSR to CALOES, once we finish up the last project next week that we have currently in play. And with that, I am happy to entertain any questions the board or the public may have. Thank you.
Questions by all the board members. Ms. Callaway, I'm sorry.
I thought I heard it was six dollars per tree average, and yet, in the attachment in the board packet, it said the average was four-hundred-and-fifty per tree.
With the remainder of fifty-six thousand one hundred and eighty-four left, the county's cost comes out to pretty much five dollars and sixty-one cents for ten thousand trees.
So there's a couple of things that played, Madam Supervisor. First, I incorrectly attached the update from last summer, last June, to the board packet. You were provided the appropriate package this morning at your table, and the current cost per tree is four-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars and twenty-one cents, and most of that is reimbursed. Use some math here. Of that, about four-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and sixty-five cents of that, we are receiving reimbursement for. So the current average cost per tree for the ten thousand one hundred and four trees that we've removed is five dollars and fifty-six cents a tree.
Okay, but the cost to remove it is four ninety-two?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The other question is, is there a common denominator on why private property owners are not returning the forms or the right of access?
Common denominators, the most common denominator is probably the late return. After we've left the project area, we geographically split up the county into projects, and a lot of the time, we get them back very late and end up getting rolled into another... the tree itself or trees end up getting rolled into a second program in that area. That's one of the common denominators. And another common denominator is just non-return of those forms. Without the return of that write-of-entry form, we can't go in and mitigate the tree without the property owner's permission. Chad, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, John. John, you have a good description of the interface that we have with these private landowners. One other issue is code compliance. There are some property owners that are concerned about code compliance and really aren't interested in having county representation come onto their property, even though we're just the foresters marking trees. There's still this perception that we represent the government.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Guernold.
Thank you very much, Chad and John. Thank you for this report, and that is a great return on investment for our county, to say the least. Is there discussions with CALOES and CAL FIRE in particular about continuing this? We had a little bit of a break because of the water rains we had in the last couple of years, but obviously, it's coming back. What are they talking about in Sacramento as far as continuing this?
The informal conversations that I've been able to have with CALOES is that they have not heard or seen the ending of this program, especially in the next fiscal year at the state level. And Supervisor Guernold, you're exactly right. I fully expect that with this very mild winter that we had last year, or last winter, save snowmageddon, that we will start to experience and see more beetle attack and drought stress in these trees, and that trees that were maybe attacked by beetles or were stressed by the prior drought, that were maybe only stressed, may succumb to that at this point and become dead. And that equates into it just being more fuel in our forests for forest fires and threats to our infrastructure if they were to fall across our ingress and egress routes. Chad, did that cover that?
Excellent presentation there. John, good work.
Thank you. I just, I think we got a good system that seems to be smooth. So if they want to keep going, we obviously know how to do this now, and thank you both.
Further board comments? Public comment?
I think I do have one online public comment. You can go ahead with your comment now.
Hello, board. Yes, I'd like to thank John for, Mr. Osborne, for taking the time to spend with the county today. I like his grasp with the English language. Become dead. Lord knows, I don't want to become dead. You know, you've had a problem with communicating with these landowners. Why have you not hired a consultant to public outreach on all these matters? I remember in the beginning, the board said, "Well, we'd like to handle that ourselves. We know our constituents. We can handle this." They were unable to do so. And now, you're still bemoaning this. Thank you, and I'll talk to you again soon.
Thank you, Mr. Stoughton. Any further public comments?
There are no further public comments.
With that, I'll bring him back to the board. Any further questions, Ms. Callaway?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Thank you, everyone, for the numbers and everything. We're pretty much moving right on to you again. Mr. Osborne.
Thank you.
Item forty, information item. Receive a department update from the Office of Emergency Services.
Thank you again, Madam Chair and honorable board members. I'll share screen, and I have... a second, I got my...
John, can you stay a little bit closer to your mic?
How's that?
Much better.
Okay. And just about done moving some screens around here. And then I can share. Okay, everyone should see our Office of Emergency Services banner?
Much better, sir.
Thank you. Okay. First of all, thank you, Chad, for joining us. I appreciate your time, sir. Moving on to an update regarding the OES department. It's been a while. We regularly update you guys on what's happening as far as, like, emergencies, but I thought I'd give you just an overview of some of the other non-emergency things that we take care of every day. So these are our core functions. Create and maintain the county-wide emergency operations plan, including emergency support function annexes. The board last adopted an emergency operations plan in June of last... June of nineteen. Maintain county multi-hazard mitigation plan collaboratively with the City of Angels Camp and other community stakeholders. We actually just finished this project and sent it to not only CALOES but FEMA for approval. We just received that approval back from FEMA, and you folks as a board will be seeing that come forward to you in the next month for adoption. Emergency preparedness and response training, as well as exercise for county employees and the operational area partners. We host training and host exercises on a regular basis. Sometimes, we partner with our stakeholders, such as PG&E, to participate in their functional exercises. Recently, we conducted NIMS and SIMS, that's the National Incident Management System, and the State Emergency Management System training that we hosted for Public Works and IWM. Those are ongoing programs, and we have made great strides in partnership with Ms. Judy Hawkins' shop to begin that training for our county-level employees. We also operate the State Homeland Security Grant Program. We manage it and deliver those projects. That is a program that is controlled by five representative stakeholders who select programs on an annual basis and use that on an annual basis and use that grant money to increase our homeland security readiness and opportunities to improve our response. We also manage and deliver the Emergency Management Performance Grant Program. That is also a federal program that's brought to us annually. We use that to offset some salary and then to enhance our emergency management program here at the county level. We've also, in the last few years, received Community Power Resiliency Grant Program funds, lovingly known as PSPS grant. This grant assists us by providing funding to make the county more resilient against power outages. Of course, the tree mortality program that we just discussed in the last budget item. We also manage the cost recovery efforts for the FEMA disaster reports. I'll get to that in just a second. We also develop and implement a multi-year training and exercise plan. That's required as a part of the Emergency Management Performance Grant. And that, those, that training plan mirrors some training required by the grant, as well as some training such as the NIMS and SIMS training that I mentioned earlier. Lastly, and probably most importantly, is create, foster relationships with our OA partners and stakeholders that promote increased preparedness, response, and recovery capacity. One of the benefits, if you will, of our COVID experience over the last 15 or 16 months is that we've had the opportunity to work and build relationships with a wide cross-section of stakeholders across the county, from our local fire departments to our state fire entities, our law enforcement partners, and our education partners, just to name a few, along with our, our internal partners, such as Public Works, HHSA, and the DA's office, and et cetera. Moving to the next slide. Our goals for this fiscal year that is coming to an end, provide oversight and management for the FEMA disaster recovery. We've been doing that vigorously. For the Butte Fire, which is the first line that you see here, when the Butte Fire was awarded, there were seven project workbooks. Six of those are now closed, and one remains open, which is Project 78. That's the hazardous tree removal phase two. The 2017 winter storm event, the first one, had 10 open project workbooks. There are seven closed with three remaining. For the second 17 winter storm event, there were 10 public, or I'm sorry, project workbooks. One is closed, six is, six are ready to be closed, and three are remaining. A note about the six that are ready to close. FEMA divides the projects into two categories, large and small. Large projects generally are projects larger than about $125,000. And anything below that is considered a small project. I say generally because each disaster has a different threshold. So for DR 4301, which was the first 17 storm, it might be $123,456. And for 4308, the second winter storms, it might be $122,000. So that mark seems to hover around about $125,000, but they are designated within each, each disaster. The reason that I go through that explanation for you is that the six that are ready to close are all small projects. You may, when we interact with FEMA, large projects can be closed individually, and small projects have to be closed as a package. So we have to finish all of the small packages and then submit them as one. And for the second 2017 winter storm event, we have two small projects that are remaining and one large project. So once we finish, once Public Works finishes up the work on the two smalls, we'll be able to close these other six. Moving on to the 19 winter storm event, there are six, we've started with six project workbooks, and I'm very happy to report that we have completely closed out 4431 with FEMA. Last, but certainly not least, is the COVID-19 pandemic, which is still open and very active as you might imagine, and we currently do not have any project workbooks under that disaster. Moving down to ensuring EOC readiness, we've been working to finalize the emergency support function annexes and identify and train personnel for EOC positions. Those positions require a level of expertise above and beyond just regular emergency work. And again, the, the upside of having survived COVID for the last 16 months is that we have really gotten to know some, some folks that are good at particular positions in the EOC, and we're beginning to get some training to those individuals so that they can assist us in, in future emergency operations centers. Execute the multi-year training plan. Again, we talked about that. Manage and operate state and federal grant programs. We've talked about that. Manage and operate the tree mortality program. We just heard the update in item 39. And lastly, coordination and management of countywide emergency preparedness, response, and recovery operations, including to several different things, the duty officer program, managing the EOC, public information and warning, logistics support, operation support, planning support, timing cost tracking, and recovery coordination. Those are all things that generally take place inside the EOC. Moving, whoop, apologize for that. Moving right along to what we've been up to so far in 2021. We kicked off the year with what we lovingly call Snowmageddon, the one good storm that we had last winter. It was in late January, and we supported Ebbets Pass Fire Protection District, Public Works, and Public Health with the operation of a district operations center in, at Ebbets Pass Fire, as well as supporting Public Health during, in opening several warming centers in the higher country where we experienced an awful lot of snow. We supported our emergency, I'm sorry, our environmental management agency with a hazmat spill. A truck overturned as it came across the bridge on Lake Pollock and was carrying what is considered hazardous materials. You see that in the lower left-hand corner picture there, that truck on its side. We also supported Public Health at 25 large COVID vaccination clinics at Frogtown. These were some of our partners, Calaveras Connect, the Sheriff's Volunteers, and our community surf program members all came together to support Public Health at these 25 large clinics. From an OES perspective, each one of these clinics represented between 16 and 20 hours for each clinic of man-hours. We did open a Level 2 Emergency Operations Center during the Campo Fire this spring. We operated that for, I think, about two days. We supported the 39th Ag District, the homecoming, because we didn't have a fair, we had a homecoming. And we supported their efforts in doing that through many months' work in their focus group, as well as being onsite with expertise and availability during the fair itself. Lastly, and most recently, we supported Public Health and HHSA's, or HHSA in the opening of six cooling centers across the county during this last extreme weather event that we had last week. I know personally, I observed temperatures up over 110 degrees here inside the county. And this was a great collaboration with Cory Allen's couple of shops in standing up, manning, and publicizing these centers and making them available to our residents. We have the centers strategically placed throughout the county so that Calaveras Connect, who provided free rides to them, that they were basically within 10 to 15 miles of a cooling center at any given time. Moving to the next slide, to our preparedness end, some of the things that we've done for preparedness is we have a collaborative effort with the Public Works Department, and we routinely provide materials for sandbag deployment at 10 sites throughout the county when we have rain, and when we have enough rain that, that we may have flooding. We also conducted extensive winter storm preparedness information campaigns, not only through just weather updates so that people knew when the weather was expected, but also what they needed to have with them and be prepared for. We conducted, again in conjunction with HHSA and Public Health, the Warming Center, warning sent, warming centers that were dispersed out through the county, as well with Calaveras Connect, who continues to provide free rides to our, our centers. And then lastly, the weather updates, which we provide. As far as COVID goes, we operated the COVID Community Call Center several months this year. We also provided testing information on our community info center, which we'll talk about here in a second. Then, of course, we were deeply involved in the COVID vaccination campaign. As far as wildfire, we have distributed, make available home hardening information, debris burning safety tips, fire weather information, as well as wildfire readiness Moving to our existing program enhancements, these are some of the things that I am most proud of that we've been able to do this winter. The first is Calaveras Alert. We've opted into a portion of Calaveras Alert where if you have a Calaveras Alert account, you can log into that account and select when and what weather warnings you would like to, to receive right on your phone or via email. They come directly from the National Weather Service through Calaveras Alert and straight to, straight to our residents. There's 80-something different weather events that you can select to be notified against or notified of, and that allows each of our contacts or our residents to select the type and seriousness of the weather alert that they would like to receive. To date, we have 18,697 contacts, public contacts in our Calaveras Alert system, which represents oh, not quite half of our 47,000 residents. Another great program that, that we rolled out this winter is the red flag banners. See them down in the lower left-hand corner of this slide. We designed and purchased these large banners and distributed them to all of the paid fire department stations throughout the county. The one you see here is obviously our TCU headquarters right down the street. And so when there is an actual red flag warning here in the county, the firefighters will display this flag in front of their station in hopes that it raises awareness about the potential for extreme fire weather and the fire behavior that that weather causes. In addition to that, we rolled out evacuation tags. I apologize that this is probably really small on your monitors, but these are like Tyvek material tags that are distributed free to our residents so that if they are evacuated for whatever purpose, whether it be wildfire, flooding, or any other order of the sheriff, they can affix these to their address sign or their front gate and let our first responders know that they have self-evacuated and that that first responder can go ahead and move on and evacuate maybe someone that hasn't. So we all know that minutes can save lives, and that few minutes begins to add up when, when time counts. That has been, we have received a great response to that program, and we've actually had neighboring counties reach out and ask us about that program, and we've helped them start to stand up their evacuation tag program as well. The multi-hazard plan we talked about, that plan will be before you guys in the next month. Lastly, the Community Information Center. And this is a creation that we partnered with our friends at IT. And as soon as it pops up here, because I'm going to show it to you live, I'll move it over here into the screen. This is a community information center where you can go 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and get valuable information that, that affects emergencies. This is our COVID-19 dashboard. You can click right here to the PG&E outage tab and see future PSPS outages, as well as current outages. You'll notice that there's no PSPS's planned right now, and then across the state, they have a few outages, looks like only a couple that go up to 500. Next to that, you'll see our evacuation application. This was a collaborative effort with CalFire, the Sheriff's Office, and IT. And so we can evacuate folks or notify folks with, in these two-by-two mile squares. That's a program that you've heard about before, but now it's here right at your fingertips and easy to find. The CalOES webcams, these are the fire cams and traffic cams. So if there is a fire in the area or you do see smoke, you can actually click on a camera and see what this camera sees. That's the Sierra Vista site that's managed by CalFire right there. Moving along, if you need information about current fire events across the state and within the county, they're finger-touch away right here. Moving to a couple of different weather applications, this one is a pretty useful tool and kind of shows you broadly how weather affects us here in Calaveras County. This is the PG&E weather station, and these are what I have found in my experience to be the most accurate. They have, PG&E has more weather stations out and, and providing data than just about anything else in the state. And as we zoom in, all these little dots are weather stations that provide real-time information to, on, on this website. Last and not least, is air quality. We added this after the smoke from last year's fires presented such an issue to us. And each dot represents an air quality station. And if I remember correctly, we now have, we have one, and I believe we're getting ready to add a second here in the county through Environmental Management Agency. So that's always available to our residents and a great place for information.
Any? Go ahead.
Last but, but not least, our, our community resiliency centers. As a part of the first round of PSPS grant funding, we purchased five of these generators that you see on the far left, and we have since then been identifying and preparing sites throughout the county that we can back one of these generators up and run this cord right here into a particular center, and we can, we can energize that center, whether it be during a PSPS, during excessive heat with no power, or... during a PSPS, during excessive heat with no power, or in the wintertime, maybe during a snowstorm when we need to heat some, a particular site for a warming center. Two slides left, and this is the second to the last one. Happy to entertain any questions that the board may, the board or public may have.
Board members, Mr. Garamendi.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Mr. Trump. That was exciting to see that as we close on seven years, seven winters up to Butte Fire, we're one project away from being, we'll finish the roads this summer, finish the trees, and close out PW 78. Those trees have been sitting up there for a long time and need to come down, so I'm glad that we're almost there and hope we could get it across the line and scratch that one off the list. That'd be a good feeling for all of us. Thank you.
Ms. Calloway.
Mr. Osborne, what conditions have to exist for a red flag warning? So, go ahead.
Conditions for a red flag, and I'm trying to chase my mouth. Conditions for red flag are represented by several different factors. Those factors include weather events that result in extreme fire behavior that occur within 24 hours. So from the time that they call a red flag warning, they believe that there will be extreme fire weather behavior by that, high winds, low humidity, and high temperatures within 24 hours. The next step down from that is a fire weather watch, and that's when the National Weather Service believes that those weather conditions could exist between 12 and 72 hours within that timeframe. So generally, it starts out with a fire weather watch, and then it gets upgraded as the forecasts become more reliable to a red flag warning.
Would that be geographically different, and could that be geographically different in different parts of the county?
Yes, it could be.
And I have one more question. Did we learn anything from the snowstorm of January, February that hit Ebbets Pass or maybe other parts of the county too that we would be, might do differently? Should we get another one? Which we would.
Absolutely, Madam Supervisor, we did. Part of that is operational lessons, things that we could do differently that will improve our response. And some of those, some things are lessons that you just don't think about until they happen. And while we spend a lot of time trying to anticipate what Mother Nature may throw at us, sometimes the best teacher is, in fact, experience. As a regular part of our emergency operations centers, we conduct after-action reports and what we call a hot wash, and that's where we get the stakeholders into a room to just talk about the big issues that we face and how we could overcome them next time. So that is a routine part of not only our winter storm response, but our response period is both the after-action and the incident hot wash.
Thank you.
Further board questions or comments? With that to public comment.
I do have one public comment.
Please proceed.
You're allowed to make your public comment now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
You can hear me very good. I haven't become dead. I am here. It seems to me that OES, you know, makes itself available, but it does not often accomplish the last mile of that work, and that is the public outreach aspect of it. Recently, we had a heat event, and it was, let's just say poorly invented. I go out, I do public canvassing door-to-door, if need be myself, and if I can recruit other people, they do it as well. And there was a very, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't want to be hard on you folks. What, since the last event, we may have an event next week, what changes will OES be making? I'd like the board to ask this of Mr. John Osborne, the Director of the Department. Thank you.
Further public comment?
Mr. Leach would like to make a comment.
Mr. Sam Leach.
Good morning, members of the board. You guys know the history, so I just want to take a moment and once again thank John Osborne and Cameron Bartwell, because when we were doing the Frogtown Clinics, we just couldn't have done it without them. And it just reminded me, seeing this pop up, you know, 25 events, they were long days being out there. These guys were really coordinating the outside space, including a parking lot that got pretty contentious in the early months of vaccinations, where, you know, we were having to turn away a lot of people who were trying to sneak in from out of county before, you know, county lines opened up. So just really a lot of respect for those guys and appreciate them, you know, just dropping everything else that they're, you know, required to do to be out there, helping public health with this pandemic, and they were just very giving of themselves. So I just wanted to make sure that I didn't forget to thank them.
Thank you, Sam.
Any further comments?
No further public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. Bring that back to the board. Is there any further questions? With that, thank you, Mr. Osborne, for the update.
Thank you.
Ms. Calloway asked for this for some time ago, so I'm glad you brought it before us.
You're very welcome.
Item 41, informational item, probation. Receive an update presentation from the probation department on SB 823. Mr. Leach, you're back in the office.
I'm back. It's like the old days.
Good to see you.
Good to see you all as well. Thanks for, thanks for having me back. I just want to give a very brief update on Senate Bill 823, which was included in the legislative session last year, passed in the midnight hour as part of the trailer bill. And really what SB 823 and the cleanup language that's in Senate Bill 92 did was they realigned the State Division of Juvenile Justice, so DJJ, formerly known as CYA, California Youth Authority, for those of you that go a little further back, realigned those kids that used to be sent to the state facilities to the county facilities. So that becomes effective July 1st, and the reason that I'm presenting today is because we are, have been working ongoing, developing a plan for local kids. So where do I start? As of July 1st, we'll no longer be sending kids to the Department of Juvenile Justice at the state level. It is now a county responsibility. Along with that comes state block grant, and that state block grant, as of right now, is set for $250,000 a year that comes to the county. Now, that money is for a dedicated purpose, which is the housing of these Division of Juvenile Justice kids that have been realigned to us. We needed to put a plan together pretty quickly. What happened when they passed this trailer bill language last year, which frankly, CPAC, the Chief Probation Officers Association, opposed this, but it was pushed through, and one year, frankly, is not very much time to plan to replace the juvenile, the state DJJ system. So juvenile halls were not built for this purpose. When you say, okay, we're now going to take kids from age 18 to 25 and put them in your county juvenile halls with your other kids, well, there's a lot of legal and mechanical and logistical issues to go along with that. So this is really more of a two-to-three-year planning process. Fortunately for us, we have one kid who is being housed at the Division of Juvenile Justice now. That kid will remain there because the facility is not closing for a few more years. So that kid will remain there. We won't have to bring that kid back, fortunately, and really, we've placed one kid in the past 15 years. So we're incredibly low utilizers of the Division of Juvenile Justice to begin with. As you know, we do not have our own juvenile hall. So this becomes pretty complicated for us because ultimately, we're still going to be dependent on sending our kids out of the county, but now it's going to be to other counties instead of the state. So, you know, given the very short runway we've had with this, what we're waiting on is for other counties to build programs. And that sometimes includes changing the actual physical structures that they have at their juvenile halls so that they can build separate wings or so that they can build new facilities. Most of it is renovation of existing facilities and trying to do their best to separate kids who would be in this new program versus the kids who are just in their normal juvenile hall operations. There's a lot of information, so hopefully that makes sense. Right now, all we really needed to do was put a very bare-bones plan in place before July 1st in the unlikely, very unlikely event that we have a kid who ends up in our court system, who would have been committed to DJJ between now and the end of this calendar year. That's very unlikely because normally, when we have a kid who commits a crime that would warrant DJJ, and we're talking, you know, murder, carjacking, torture, like some of the most serious offenses that you would see, it's very rare that we would send a kid here. But if we did have one, normally, you know, it can take a year or sometimes multiple years for the court process to play out for a kid to even be committed anyway. But in the unlikely event that a kid would be committed between July 1st and December 31st of 2021, we would need to at least have a bare-bones plan in place to be able to receive the money and then adjust the plan so that we could spend that money. Assuming that doesn't happen, well, really, either way, we'll be coming back before December 31st with a more formalized, more detailed plan. But what I'm waiting on is for the other counties to build those programs, because right now, I can't really go investigate programs and try to see which ones we can contract with until they're built. And those counties have not had time, some of them, to even make the decision if they're going to build one, but the ones that have don't really have formalized processes in place. They're still working on things like cost sharing, how to do this. So once some of that works out over the next few months, then I'll be coming back pretty close toward the end of the year with a formalized plan. Now, the plan that I bring is not just my plan. This is a plan that's developed, and this is a codified part of the trailer language in 823 as well as 92. The plan has to go to our Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council, which is an existing body. Supervisor Tuffinelli serves on the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council. I know Supervisor Callaway mentioned that she had served on it years ago, so hopefully most of you are familiar with that, but it approves our other block grants. So we have a JJ CPA and YODG block grant, which funds a lot of our juvenile services, including our short-term juvenile hall commitments and all the services that go along with that and some of our supervision services. So this has now been added to the Juvenile Justice Coordinating Council. However, it's been added as part of a newly required subcommittee. Now, that subcommittee is still being formed. We've had a meeting with that subcommittee. We did get a couple of people from the community. We're required to have three community members attending that, so I'm still planning to broaden that out before we have an actual actionable plan. So that'll happen over the coming months, but we had to whip this together pretty quick to make sure that we can receive the funds, have them being banked up in the event that we get a case. These cases will be incredibly expensive if and when we get them. So we need to, over the next couple of years, really just be banking money, hoping we don't get a commitment. And that's oversimplifying it, but that's really what we need to do. So, let's see, what did I leave out? That subcommittee will keep meeting over the years and approving the plans, and then we will bring them before the board. The board is not required to approve the plan that's attached today. That's just kind of a quick plan to be able to receive the money. There's no codified requirement for the board to approve it. I gave it to you all for informational purposes, to get you in the loop and kind of see what's coming. What is required to be approved will be the plan that I bring you by December 31st of this year. So by then, we will have worked out the subcommittee. That subcommittee will submit the reports to the JJCC, who will meet again, approve it. It then goes to you, assuming that the board approves that plan. Then, because we're California, we like to make things really bureaucratic, that plan will then go to the state BSCC, which is the Board of Community Corrections. They have to approve the plan. It then goes to this newly formulated OYCR, I forget what that stands for, Office of Youth and Community Restoration. That's newly formed. They're kind of going to be an oversight committee, and that's under the state HHSA of the law. So there are a lot of moving parts, a lot of players involved in this, and a lot of interest groups, community-based organizations, and advocates who frankly don't want to see any kids locked up anywhere and don't believe that there was a need for DJJ or for these local agencies. So I don't know what we would do with them. There don't seem to be answers, just a lot of criticisms. So, you know, we're going to do the best we can, put together a plan to make sure that we have a safe place to house kids when the most serious crimes are committed and that those kids are not only kept safe and that our communities kept safe from them, but also that we give the kids a better chance of rehabilitation than what we hear they were getting at state facilities. So a lot of information pretty quickly. I meant to fly through this and then just do a quick Q and A, see what questions you have, board members, and what I can bring back to you next time in a more thorough plan.
Well, thank you, Mr. Leach. It seems like the complicated mission of rehabilitating juveniles through these times is getting more complicated for you. So, Ms. Calloway.
Mr. Leach, can the time of your staff, your probation staff, be charged against the $250,000?
That's, thank you for asking that. I should have covered that. No, this is, so of course, there's a supplanting clause. As of right now, I'm really, this is, it's frustrating money because I feel like there, of course, would be better ways this money could be spent, but this is for the specific purpose of these DJJ kids. And, you know, I think it's really tough for me to argue any kind of net widening or prevention services when we've had one commitment in the past 15 years. You know, this isn't something where we really would be high utilizers. We don't want to broaden that out. You know, we try to work with kids locally in our community, and we want to keep that approach. I mean, it's just the right way to do business. And frankly, structurally, this bill doesn't allow for that, but I do believe this language will evolve, and the, as you know, when the controller and auditors and legislators get involved in this, there will be, I think, changes made over the coming years, because otherwise, the alternative is we're going to see huge amounts of reserve funds sitting there. And when we have kids who need services locally throughout the state, why are we going to bank up huge reserve funds? But then, of course, we also have other counties who are high utilizers, and I won't pick on any county specifically, but if they have a lot of kids, they might not be getting enough funding from the state to just cover their costs for this, and then they're going to be going to the county board saying, we need extra money just to house these kids that used to be covered at the state level. So it's a very messy bill. You can see why CPAC opposed it, still obviously opposed to it, and at the same time, I've got to act up, so there's no real time for pouting on my part. We're just going to do it. But I, no, I don't think we can spend this money. But I, no, I don't think we can spend this money locally on any other kind of services. It's just going to sit there until hopefully we get a different interpretation or some legislative change to say, "Well, we don't want, you know, hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars if it accrues for, you know, four or five-plus years just sitting there. We want to make sure it's going to good use."
Any further board questions? Public comment?
Yes, I have one public comment online. You can go ahead and make your comment now.
Good morning, Mr. Leach. You're a very competent man in your field. I'm glad you're not the HHS director anymore, and I'm sure you're glad of that, glad of that as well. You're doing a fantastic job, and look at the agenda item. I see it's only an informational item, and I'd like to remind the board that not to get stuck on what's to be presented here, you may make changes and come back to you with something, something a little bit different. And don't be shocked when that happens. With that, back to you.
Thank you. Any further public comment?
No further public comment.
I'll bring it back to the board. Any further questions of Mr. Leach, other than thank you for your time, sir? We'll move to item 42, action item, economic and community development. Authorize the board chair to sign a letter in response to Calaveras Unified School District regarding surplus of the former Railroad Flat Elementary School and direct staff to enter into negotiations to acquire the property.
Good morning, Chair Stoper, Honorable Board. Kathy Galino, your Economic and Community Development Director. And before you today, you have a letter that we received from the Calaveras Unified School District indicating that they will be surplusing the former Railroad Flat Elementary School and making that available to various public entities. I put together a letter of response indicating that we received the letter and that we would potentially be interested in entering negotiations. At this point, there is no commitment to do so other than support from the board for us to enter those negotiations in closed session at some point in the future. It's pretty simple.
Thank you, Ms. Galino. Any board questions?
Are we going to be putting in the letter that so-and-so's going to be contacting you or you're going to be the one? I mean, who's the lead liaison in this?
You can help determine that if you'd like. I am working on some of the Prop 68 per capita funding that this railroad flat school is considering looking out for acquisition. So if you would like me to be your point person, I can.
I think, I mean, all we're saying is we look forward to talking to you then. We should say, you know, that Kathy or whoever the board chooses or Krista chooses will be our point person, will be getting in contact with you. I mean, we just, just say, I think there should be something in there about that. And I, I'm sorry.
No, I just want to, I was seeing, trying to understand fully what you're asking. So to the point of directing specific staff to enter into negotiations to acquire the properties, your point or?
First of all, I mean, back up a step, I don't believe we should send, resend the enclosures to them that they sent to us. I don't think that we need to do that. We're here, receipt of your letter, request for proposal resolution, et cetera, et cetera, period. Do not send back to them what they just sent to us. The county is interested, so forth, we look. And then whomever, period. Kathy G. is our lead.
Okay.
I mean, whoever, or Ben, or John, or Krista. I mean, we just leave it hanging, and I feel we should say something.
Absolutely. We can amend the letter right now. Do you want to do that right now?
Does, does the rest of the board have the appetite to amend the letter right now? Mr. Toffenelli?
Sure.
Ms. Callaway, is it yes?
Yeah. I might, I might make an amendment to the suggestion that we say our CAO, Ms. Palata, or her designee will be in contact with you. That way, let you manage the executive functions.
Ms. Fuldorff?
Yes, especially since the letter from the school district goes to the planning department. It kind of conflicts, and I don't think it would be in our best interest if they're sending stuff to planning and not to admin.
Very good. It sounds like we have a consensus on the, on, you know, the CAO or, you know, designee.
The designee.
So we'll amend it to that point. We don't need to necessarily write it in full right now, do we, Ms. Callaway?
Sorry.
Do, we can let them amend that post-meeting for signature.
Oh, yes, yes.
All right. Is it clear?
Amending the enclosures, please.
Is it clear what, what we're asking for here?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any other questions or by board members? Now that's time, we'll go to public comment, unless Krista, you?
No. No, I think that's a clear direction.
Okay.
I do have one public comment. You can make your public comment now.
Good morning, Board. Whether you know it or not, you have a situation. And the best course of action here would be to, instead of purchasing property and leasing it to an entity, would be to have a finding of a public benefit and grant the money to that entity at 80% of the sale price. The, under statute, the Unified School District was required to get evaluation of that property, and you should ask them to share that with you. It is, for the county to take on more remote property at this time, I don't recommend. You haven't, you do not have that developed Parks and Recreation Department, and to lease the property is assuming some responsibility as well. Of course, you will see this differently because you're under political, you're looking for political favors here. You're getting none from me. This is, it's inappropriate that we have not had a full packet of information available regarding the organization, their mission, whether they're, whether they're fulfilling their mission, their finances. That leaves the public in the dark. So continue on with what you believe is, what you believe is right. But remember, ethics is important. Back to you.
Thank you. Any further public comments?
No, no further public comment.
I'll bring that back to the board. Any questions or all entertain a motion?
So moved as amended.
Thank you, Mr. Garamindi. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Passes on a 5-0 vote of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Galino. Item 43, ordinance, Division of Cannabis Control. Conduct a public hearing, approve fourth addendum to the Medical Cannabis Cultivation and Commerce Ordinance Environmental Impact Report, waive reading, and adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 17.95 of the Calaveras County Code relating to cannabis distribution, distribution, and testing, and authorize summary publication. Mr. Wayland?
Members of the Board of Supervisors, I'm Greg Wayland, your Director of Cannabis Control. The item before you today will introduce a permitting process for testing and distribution. The recommendation from staff is to waive reading, conduct a public hearing, and if the board is so inclined following the public hearing, to approve the fourth addendum to the county's environmental impact report certified in 2017, SCH number 2016042019, and adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 1795 as presented today. And following that, to authorize summary publication. The Division of Cannabis Control prepared a presentation to walk through some of the changes, some of the important aspects of what we're asking for today. So if there aren't any questions, I'd like to go ahead and get started with that.
I'm opening the public hearing so we can start with that, Mr. Wayland? Yes, sir.
So we're pleased to bring this item before you today. We believe that the proposed amendments will reflect a fitting solution for Calaveras County as to the local cannabis industry's reliance on out-of-county distributors that would remedy that situation and also address the absence of testing facilities locally. We also believe that this is an important step towards retaining revenue from this industry locally in Calaveras County. So just by way of background, if the board recalls, February 9th, 2021, the Board of Supervisors instructed staff to bring forward this item with proposed amendments to Chapter 1795, and that would provide a permitting process for testing and distribution. The direction included taking the draft straight to the Planning Commission for proper vetting and public hearings. Those public hearings took place on April 8th, May 13th, and May 27th. And ultimately, the Planning Commission recommended the current draft, Chapter 1795, and the addendum by a four-line vote. The final Planning Commission meeting was also in-person. Just to get into some more details about the proposed uses that the amendments would allow, we're introducing a type of distribution that we are calling a limited distributor in zones A1, AP, GFU, RA, and CP. There would be a general distributor type 11 in zone C2, M1, M2, and M4, as well as distribution type 13, which is a transport-only distribution, in zone C2, M1, M2, and M4. And following this PowerPoint presentation, I also have a depiction of where those zones are in the county with some detail on the number of parcels and acres that they cover. The proposed amendments would also provide a permitting process for testing in zone C2, M1, M2, and M4. So as additional background, the current Chapter 1795 authorizes type 13. It's a self-transport distribution and transport-only. We allow processor license types in A1, AP, GFU, and RA, as well as type 11 out-of-county distribution. So those would be general distributors who come into the ag zones and service the cultivation industry, as well as the cultivation licenses in A1, AP, GFU, and RA. The aggregate of these uses is important to outline because ultimately, what we intend to present on is to show that the limited distributor that I'll describe is essentially an aggregate of these uses. So you can see in the text box on the bottom right-hand corner of this slide, these are state regulations that describe what type of activities are authorized by each of these license types. So a cultivation or processor license type, for instance, can dry, cure, grade, trim, roll, store, package, and label cannabis or non-manufactured cannabis products. The type 11 distribution license may but is not required to package, label, and store cannabis. So as you can see, there is quite a bit of overlap in the types of uses authorized by these license types. And I also would like to note that in the process of developing these proposed changes to 1795, I did ask enforcement agencies at the county generally the following questions: Have you received any complaints regarding odor from a permitted indoor cultivation site? And the same question regarding odor from any licensed vehicle transporting cannabis? And the answer that I received was no. So as additional description of what a distributor does, they have several different types of roles, much of which is administrative and record-keeping, but also transportation and delivery of the product to different licensees. So they are kind of a network or commerce-type activity where they transport the product, but they also conduct administrative roles such as entering data into track and trace that shows shipping manifests, details what they're transporting, what it is, who it's from, collecting taxes, and several other important administrative roles. Another important fact is that approximately 5% of our cultivation permittees have a self-transport addendum. So that's the type 13 self-transport that you see in the upper left-hand corner. And as a consequence, most of our cultivators rely on out-of-county licensees to distribute their product. And just to give you an example of what that looks like, so in one example that I studied, I discussed with one of our cannabis licensees what their process is right now for distribution. This one happened to be an indoor cultivator who also has a retail premises. So in this case, the licensee is required to reach out to distributors in different counties. The one that I learned of was Shasta County, Lake Shasta to be specific. And the approximate round trip would involve transporting the cannabis from Calaveras County 262.4 miles to Shasta, having it tested, and driving it back 262.4 miles. If there were a solution that provided for distribution locally, it's possible and appears likely that these trips would be entirely eliminated in this specific situation. But in studying this, I also noticed that you'll see similar effects of limiting, possibly limiting traffic in this industry if local distribution and testing were allowed. So it appears likely that this would be a mitigation or a merely a tory effect. I've heard terminology, I think that it's beneficial to describe what the limited distributor does because of terminologies such as distribution centers or facilities, because that description, at least when you visualize it, you see sort of warehouses or large structures that would service multiple customers. But I would liken this as the difference between a bank and a vault. So a bank, their business model relies on volume. They have multiple customers, and the more customers, the more business they do. But if they only had one customer, meaning they only, in the case of cultivators, could only distribute under their own canopy, then it's a totally different concept. You're not talking about multiple businesses and multiple batches of cannabis that's being stored. It's a one-to-one thing with what they already have. So it literally is the difference between that example of a bank and a vault. And in fact, the regulations do require them, as a distributor, to securely store their cannabis. And to further describe this, in a moment, I'll show you some diagrams from existing cannabis cultivation sites that show exactly how the limited distributor, because of its limitation of the distribution under their own canopy, really shows how they can integrate the distributor into existing facilities if they choose. And I just cut and paste the regulation here from 1795, 050F8. This is the proposed limitation. This is the proposed limitation. This is what would require a limited distributor in the ag zones to only distribute under their own canopy. So as you can see, they have to have a commercial cannabis cultivation permit already issued and validated on the same parcel for which the limited distributor permit has been made. Distribution is limited to the cannabis cultivated on the same parcel or an adjacent parcel or parcels by the same permitee who has applied for the limited distributor permit. The limited distributor premises also has to meet the setback requirements, essentially that cultivation already has to do in the ag zones.
Mr. Whalen, can you go back to the last slide?
Yes.
B, distribution is limited cannabis cultivated on the same parcel or on an adjacent parcel or parcels by the same permitee who has applied for the distributor permit. The limited distribution premises shall meet this, or other parcel on B, or parcels owned by the same permitee.
Yes, sir. So essentially what this is doing is requiring that the person that applies for the limited distributor has to be the same person who has the permit, and they can only distribute within the canopy that that permit authorizes to cultivate, if that makes sense. It's basically, the cultivation permit provides the bookends for the amount of cannabis that they can distribute. They can't do other, they cannot distribute other cultivators cannabis that cannot enter the distribution premises, they can't distribute it.
Right. I just want to make sure that the way it's written, it's not stopping them or making them, let's say someone has four different premises with four different permits on the same piece of property, they don't have to build a distribution room for each premises across the property, correct?
Not, no, sir, not under my, not under the way that this has been structured. But the way that that, I mean, in practical, in practical terms, the way that that would ultimately work out is how are they currently structured? How do they currently have their premises diagram for cultivation? Where's the storage taking place? Where's the processing facilities? So I don't believe that that would restrict them if they're co-located and they're the exact same permitee, but it's going to depend on how they have their premises set up.
Right. Another question would be, what if a single permitee owned one piece of property and then owned another piece of property some distance away? Would they still be, have the ability to process and distribute from one parcel? Or do they have to do it on two different parcels if there is, if there's actually distance in between those parcels?
So just so I understand, so if you have one cultivation permitee who has a cultivation premises on one or a few parcels that are adjacent to one another, and they have a cultivation permit on a totally different parcel or set of parcels, could they distribute from, could they basically distribute both parcels from one distribution premises? Is that fair to say?
Yes. If it's all the same person, that is the single permitee.
So the way that, the way that this is structured right now is that because the distribution is limited to the cannabis cultivated on the same parcel or on adjacent parcels by the same permitee, my, my reading of this, my, the way that this is structured is that they would be limited to the parcel or parcels that the distribution premises is on. So they would not be able to distribute from separate premises.
Do any other board members want to comment to that?
I do. Isn't that a problem? I mean, when you look at the program overall, there's more, they shared permit or multiple permits by one owner in different locations, so then that permit holder is going to have to have how many distribution permits now rather than consolidate it, knowing that the one umbrella? I don't know if I'm making sense, but...
No, you are.
Supervisor Fallen, if I understand that concern, I, it's, there would, if that, if that shared distribution were allowed, if there were the same exact permitee, they had separate premises, that may boil down to a policy decision by the board, but the real answer to how that would look in practical terms is kind of complicated because they may be able to, if they have a distribution premise on one parcel, transport still, they could still transport. But I think that that's a policy decision, and I'm open to discussing if the board would like to see any particular amendment on that issue.
I would, I would see if the board has appetite to amend that issue so that for strictly a policy call, that if, if multiple parcels and different premises are owned by the same permitee, that they may consolidate theirs to one single property when it comes to the distribution permit and have one license. I seem, I think it seems overly redundant to do multiple licenses for a single person for multiple premises.
I'd like to at least use some common sense. I mean, this just seems more paperwork if they've got to apply for more permits.
We will allow public comment when it's time. Thank you.
Supervisor Stoppa, if I could just get a little bit of clarification on what you're asking. You're, you're suggesting that somebody with a, with two cannabis cultivation sites be able to drive cannabis from one site to another where the distribution would be located? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes, I'm trying to make sure there's no barriers to that within our ordinance.
I guess my, I guess my only concern is whether we've adequately studied the trips that we're talking about adding or potentially adding without, back to the Planning Commission.
That, you know, I don't think, I think it's going the opposite way with A1 as opposed to someone coming from out of the county right now that's collecting that cannabis and saying, and with a legitimate distribution permit. I mean, at no point can you say that there's more traffic going, going, moving around substantially more than there was in the past with just the transport. When it comes to specifically these, because we're not taking any outside marijuana into any of the ones that we're discussing right now.
Chair Stoppa, I, I think it may be helpful if, because the way that limited distributors can integrate into existing cultivation sites is, it's pretty, it's pretty feasible for them. And so if you are okay with it, what I'd like to do is show the site diagrams and describe how that happens, and maybe reserve this issue for the end of the presentation.
Absolutely. We definitely need to bring it up later.
Thank you. So as just additional clarification, the definitions in section 1795, 020CC, a county-issued distributor permit may be general, such as would be allowed in the industrial zones, M1, M2, M4, and C2, or limited, as described in 1795, 050F8, authorizing the full scope of activities the state allows under a type 11 license, but restricting the permitee to distribution only of his or her own cannabis cultivated under a separate cultivation permit. So just to sort of illustrate how this may look, I've taken four samples that are reasonably representative of what we have currently in outdoor mixed light and indoor cultivation, and I wanted to demonstrate how this may look if a cultivator wanted to integrate distribution onto their premises. So in diagram one, this site illustration shows, and I know that it's, it may be a little hard to see, it's sort of stretched a little bit, the building marked as number seven, it's toward the top left-hand corner, is a structure that has been designated for drying, processing, and packaging. So it appears to be approximately 80 by 30 feet. Under the limited distributor, because they're required to diagram separate portions of the premises, that could look like a number of things. It could be a lock on the door, it could be a partition that's being built. In the case of one cultivator, it's a matter of designating a separate room and building metal cages in it to house the cannabis while it's being stored for testing. And I know that in the case of one of our indoor cultivators, we're talking about between five and six boxes that are of a size you could carry two or three, is the way it was described to me at the same time, would represent what their harvest is, and that's the volume that they're actually storing in these boxes. So it's easy to see that a premises like what you have here, under note seven, could be adequate for that. In this example, this, there's a blow-up of a garage for processor room in the top right-hand corner. It's been designated as processing, which includes the ability to store, package, and label. Again, in this situation, especially because there are garage doors on this particular building, it seems like this would be readily able to be converted over towards a distribution premises if they were to apply for it. This diagram shows on the left-hand side, there are three secured storage containers, approximately eight by eight feet each, and then a separate processing area on the right-hand side that is approximately 20 by 50 feet. So this premises too appears to have facilities that could readily accommodate a distributor And then this one, almost dead center, slightly to the top left, you'll see a hundred by 50-foot processing and drying structure. Likewise, you can also see infrastructure for traveling on this property and an entrance and exit. So these are all examples of what we currently have on our cultivation premises, and based upon just reviewing these diagrams, which again are fairly typical of what we see in the cultivation industry, existing facilities appear to be adequate in many of these properties to accommodate what the limited distributor would do. Again, because it's limited to their own canopy, there's no extra need for storage. So it's a one-to-one with what they currently have. The difference would be that if you have a limited distributor coming from an outside county servicing this area, it would just be our own local permitee who is the one driving the truck, and subject to our regulations, including background checks, preparing manifests, and other things that I'll get into in just a moment. So by way of operating restrictions, as I said, all owners and workers are required to have a cannabis background clearance badge. They'll go through our vetting process under chapter 9.22 of the county code. In the state regulations, distributors are already required to develop manifests and keep records of exactly what they have and are transporting, which we've also required them to maintain a physical copy of that shipping manifest at all times during transportation. The shipping manifest must be sufficient and detailed enough to include all the information required by 16 CCR 5314, which has a number of different identifying requirements that they have to meet, such as what they're transporting, who it's from, where it's going to. This is an A-to-B process for them, they can't, they can't detour, they have to go straight to where they're going. There's a number of state regulations that already sit on top of what we have that govern this, and our ordinance includes that our permit holders must comply with state regulations, and that's in the proposed 1795, 08OB and 1795, 09OB. So in addition to that, they must require, they are required to maintain appropriate records of transactions and the shipping manifest should we ever ask. The driver of the vehicle shall be the permitee themselves or directly employed by the distributor pursuant to 16 CCR 5313. So that's already a state requirement. And in practical terms, it's likely that it's, in many cases, going to be the owner themselves that would be driving these vehicles, but it's of course up to them, but it has to at least be an employee, and they would have to hold a CB-CV. There's an entire chap, there's an entire section of the state regulations that provide for security plans that apply to the different types of cannabis businesses, and those are procedures that they have to adopt, and the security measures include things like limited access areas, locks, video surveillance, fencing, and alarm systems. They would be required to submit a copy of their security plan that they give to the state, to the sheriff. These are just, I think I've already referenced these, shipping manifests, and keeping records of transactions, and chain of custody records. So the permitting program for this, like cultivation, would be administered through the Division of Cannabis Control. All applicants would be required to submit an application for a permit, and that'll be on forms developed by the Division of Cannabis Control. We would develop criteria for what information and documents shall be submitted to constitute a complete application, but at a minimum, it has to conform to the requirements that are expressly stated in the proposed version of 1795. Distribution and testing would be subject to Measure G that was enacted by the voters on November 3rd and became operative on January 1st. It includes a broad definition of gross receipts, meaning all receipts, cash, credits, property of any kind of nature without deduction for the cost of the property sold, cost of goods or materials used, labor or services costs, interest paid or payable, or losses or expenses. There are some exceptions built into that code, but that's generally speaking how broad this definition is. And that would apply to both distribution and testing. The taxable rate as adopted by the voters is that every person engaged in any other cannabis activity than cultivation, including as a distributor or as a testing laboratory, shall pay cannabis activity tax at the rate of 5% of the gross receipts per calendar I think it's important to note also that chapter 3.56 is, it provides that all of this tax revenue as under cultivation is general fund revenue. It's to be used for general governmental purposes, and that's under 356020. And then applications for commercial cannabis distributor and testing permits would not be accepted until the effective date of a permit application fee. We are fee-funded, we are currently, we would be as, we would be fee-funded under, under this program as well. this program as well, distribution and testing, and that's seventeen nine five oh six oh C eleven of the proposed changes. So, briefly, I've also obtained a copy or a map of the county that shows what are, where our industrial areas are and gives an example of some of the details on the acreage and parcel sizes involved. So, this is, this diagram, you can see from the, the general map where these locations are. There's a lot west of San Andreas. And then in the legend down on the bottom right-hand corner, you see the C two, M one, M two, and M four zones with a combined acreage of ten thousand two hundred and sixty-four point eight on nine hundred and thirty-five parcels. This is further broken down by supervisory district below that. And so, this helps give a, a big picture of where our industrial zones for the general unrestricted type eleven and testing facilities would be located. And just by way of additional background on testing facilities, these tend to be smaller office-type of facilities, probably indistinguishable from what's around them. When they take a sample for testing, they go to the distribution premises and they meet with the distributor or an employee of the distributor who, together with them, actually videotapes taking a sample, which is point one-three percent of the batch being tested, which cannot exceed fifty pounds. And they basically create a chain of custody document that shows exactly when this was done, they describe the batch, which plants they're testing, et cetera, and they keep these records while the sample is taken to the lab to be tested and the results being reported back. So, this map shows you where possible, available premises might be for these.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Wayland. I, I asked you to put this map together so the board could visualize this. Can I, can I actually, the C two, which is in orange, majority of those strips go through towns, right? One of the ones over the left, just under Burson, is actually Lockentenna. Am I correct? And then, the one through San Andreas is downtown San Andreas, the main strip going, road going down it?
It appears to be, because of, because of the, how complicated it would be to add the roads to this map, they weren't added, but that appears to be correct.
So, I'll, I'll bring that up later when we go over everything else. I just wanted the board members to note that a majority of those C two areas are within towns.
Okay, so the last, the last thing that I wanted to address, it's kind of a housekeeping issue. I've got, when we were drafting this and restructuring it to accommodate the, the new permit types, there were, there are two clerical errors that I missed. The first one is in seventeen nine five one forty. So, in this section, the reference to seventeen nine five one seventy H should be changed to seventeen nine five one seventy A four C. And in seventeen nine five one forty B three, the reference to subsection oh seven oh H should be changed to seventeen nine five one seventy A four D. And then lastly, in seventeen nine five oh nine oh E E, you have the similar reference to oh seven oh H that needs to be changed to oh seven oh A four C.
I found another clerical error that we didn't talk about, Mr. Wayland, beforehand. It's seventeen nine five oh six oh B. This is a leftover from when we only had cultivation on the books, so the only type of use permit would have been a conditional use permit. I'll wait till you get there. So, sorry, can you scroll down a little bit? Okay, um, gosh, did I actually, there, nine, so it would be number, so it's B nine. So, it should probably read instead, "For an applicant requiring a conditional or administrative use permit, a complete use permit application and application fee, which shall be processed as a separate application pursuant to chapter seventeen eighty-two, in addition to the application required under this chapter." This would just capture any type of cannabis activity requiring a use permit, and I expect that you would want the same rules to apply for the distribution and testing applicants as well.
I, I concur with Ms. Moss Lewis also on that amendment. Any, any board members opposed to that? She?
I understand what you said, no, yes.
Yes, please.
Okay, so, it, I'll just, it currently reads for, this is the application criteria for cannabis activity permits. It currently reads that one of the application requirements is, "For an applicant requiring a conditional use permit pursuant to seventeen nine five oh five oh D two," which is the cultivation application, "a complete conditional use permit application and application fee, which shall be processed as a separate application pursuant to chapter seventeen ninety-eight two, in addition to the application required under this chapter." That's how it currently reads. Because the cannabis activity permit for distribution and testing will include some applications that also require a use permit, which could be either a conditional use permit or an administrative use permit, depending on their zone, I propose that this subsection be changed to read, "For an applicant requiring a conditional or administrative use permit, a complete use permit application and application fee, which shall be processed as a separate application pursuant to chapter seventeen eighty-two, in addition to the application required under this chapter."
That better for you, Mr. Garamendi?
I understand what you said, no, yes.
Anyone opposed to that amendment? I don't hear any opposed. Thank you, Ms. Moss Lewis, and I think that the same thing goes for Mr. Wayland on his catches on, and his edits. Do you have more to say right now, Mr. Wayland?
No, sir, I, if, if you're amenable to it, I, I think turning it over for any questions you might have would be, would be great.
All right, um, I'm, you know, before we get, get into that, I'm gonna just bring forward a couple of proposals I'd like the board to consider. You know, with the map that was just put before us and the C two, M one, M two, and M four zones in the county, I personally, for the type eleven and type thirteen distribution licenses, would like to strike C two out of the, out of the areas that those type of licensees could be in that type of zoning. For, for the very reason that most of those lie in towns, there's more impact to the community in those areas, and, and I just don't see a distribution, major distribution hub fitting into our major epicenters of our communities like that.
Mr. Seppert, can I just make a quick statement?
You can make a public comment when the timing's right.
I understand what you're saying.
But I'm not, no, you, you're, you're out of line at the time, just patience. You can address each one of the things you want to address during your allotted time period.
I, I don't have a, that, I just wanted to make the state law statement, that they would already be illegal. Based on state law, you can't put a distribution center within a thousand feet of a school.
Oh, right, yeah, no, but that's not always the case in the C two, but thank you.
Yeah.
Um, you know, that would help mitigate, as was just stating with our schools and a lot of our other uses that, that, I forget the word, you know, tied to uses with schools and.
Preschools and everything else.
But, uh, sensitive use is what I'm looking for. So, also, um, there, there's more I would like to change. As we're talking with Mr., Mr. Wayland earlier and Ms. Moss Lewis, we have, I have it right here, proposed edit that I would like to insert on, uh, when it comes to the single, owner of all those different permits, we could add a D notwithstanding subsections A and B if limited distributor has permits for additional cannabis cultivation sites in the county. The limited distributor may engage in limited distribution activities between all of his or her sites under a single limited distribution permit. You know, just to clarify that this won't add to total trips because each cultivation site will still need to be visited by a distributor the same number of times, whether by an in-county distributor or an out-of-county distributor, such as we're doing right now, which brings people in from out of our county that have licenses as per allowed by, per state law. So, that, that's a suggested edit. And then also, I've talked with council before getting here, I would like the board to talk about limiting the general distribution licenses, type elevens that go into M one, M two, M four zoning, if they all agree to the C two edit, that we limit those to a total of three to five, uh, type eleven distributors. Do I have that right, type eleven, Ms., or?
Yes, sir.
Three to five in the entire county. We have limited industrial property. We talk about diversifying our economy and our general plan. We also agreed to diversify our economy pa, just past marijuana, and we have limited industrial properties in our county. I think that, you know, ultimately, most of those aren't for sale regardless, but if we limit a big general distribution site to three to five permits in the county, we can do that legitimately based on, you know, diversifying, I already said it three times, diversifying our economy. And those are my proposals, but, and I'll let the rest of the board bring up what they would like.
Ms. Cowan?
Mr. Wayland, on a type thirteen, is that just driving, is that just pickup going? And so, a type thirteen location would pretty much just be an office where a type eleven would be storing?
Correct, so the type thirteen is called a transport-only. They can transport between licensees except for retailer, they cannot transport cannabis to a retailer, but essentially, it is a transport-only license.
So, they're not storing anything, it's just an office building that they might have?
Yeah, and a place to, to park their, their vehicle, yeah.
But they're not gonna be storing any cannabis in those locations under a type thirteen if it was in a zone C two?
No, ma'am.
So, I couldn't support getting rid of a C two for a type thirteen because we have commercial centers in C two locations. So, if you're just, if you're a type thirteen, you're gonna maybe want an office somewhere. So, why would you just limit it to a M one, two, or four, when they could be in a C two? Because there's no product, it's just office. And the type eleven, your comment about limiting it to just three or five, I don't support that. I mean, if you want somebody to have a business, then let them, I mean, I would consider omitting where they'd be storing from, from a C two, but not limiting the number of customers they would have to three to five. Because this is a business, and we're talking about developing a business, and Shasta, whatever distributor can, is not limited to just having three to five customers. So, why would we wanna limit a type eleven to just three to five customers? I don't see what the advantage is to that, because they're not sitting on the product for a long time.
All right, two, two legitimate questions. I'll tell you with the type thirteen, why would someone need a office in town when they already have a permit, permitted grow site they could do their type thirteen from and build their office on their own property?
That's a, that's a type eleven, not a thirteen.
I mean, type eleven, my, my apologies, I, okay. So, with that, you know, and there, there is, you know, with transport, there is product involved, you know? The, the product isn't, you know, always not stopped by the office or the whole holding area in, in, in the entire trip, you know? So, with the type thirteen, I would, I would say that, you know, limit it to three to five is not re-limiting it to three to five customers. What it does is really limiting it to three to five people that could have an exponential number of customers, which would create a, you know, which reduces the impact on, to our community. Yeah, that's okay.
Well, I, I agree with Supervisor Kyle, I'm a little bit hesitant about limiting the permit, because then it becomes more of a monopoly, and I understand why we need to have that conversation so we can keep them to those cultivators, but if, I don't wanna limit other individuals from being able to be those type elevens if they choose in the future not to. I mean, how are you gonna hand off these permits? How are you going to, if they decide not to do it anymore, how are you, then we go back into this transfer permit and issuing all over again, and any other investment for a large, potential larger testing facility that could come into the county? I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm hesitant, I, I see both sides, but I don't wanna shoot ourselves in the foot either.
I, I hear you on, on some of your notes, with the testing facility and not proposing any of these constraints when it comes to a test, testing facility. You know, so, that, that's a, that's a little bit different, but I understand total amount of product to be able to sustain a testing facility is where you're going with that. The, the rest is, would be on a, based on a first come, first service, first, first come, first serve format with people, you know, basically with our, your application requirements with a first come, first serve with a cap on it, so that Mr. Wayland could put that forward separate from the ordinance, but it would still follow things. You either have your lease, written lease from, from the person on the industrial property, or you own the industrial property at the time you put in the application, first come, first serve. That's as simple as it gets.
Mr. Garamendi?
Thank you. Just a question, Mr. Wayland, why is C two in there? Was there a specific reason that the planning commission wanted that in there? Because I'm, I'm leaning towards what Supervisor Stoppard suggested, not having C two in there, because if there's one lesson we learned in two thousand and sixteen, we don't wanna jam this in people's faces, and being downtown's gonna have an impact, so I wanna know what the logic was to include it. So I want to know what the logic was to include it.
The logic would have been consistency and suitability of use for that zone. That was something that's been in there since this was first drafted and proposed. But there's no specific advantage or anything particular that it has that the M1, two and four zones don't.
Thank you. And this final question is, this is a statement. So I agree with Supervisor Stoppa on the C2. I understand the concerns of not wanting to limit business and I'm for business. But I also learned in 2016 it's good to go slow on some of the big changes like this. So I would support a cap however we come up with that. On the type one general distribution, the bigger distribution centers. I'd want to see how that worked out because we do have a limited amount of industrial zone. And as we all look at the map, we know a lot of that's just not available. So that's more of a Supervisor.
Thank you, Mr. Garmendy. Ms. Callaway.
The other reason I don't support putting a cap on the distribution type 11 is allowing then limited type for the cultivators. We already have, if I understand, Mr. Wayland, we already have a few who would distribute their own? Or none at this point?
Well, we have three self-transport licenses. That because of the limitations on that license, it's only three. So it's about 5% of our permits.
So do you anticipate, which I would, that a cultivator would want to be their own distributor? Because that cuts out the middle person for them. So why would they want to pay somebody to do it when they can do it themselves and save a substantial amount of money? So given that more cultivators will probably do the limited type, then you're not, we're not going to see a market for distribution type 11. Because it isn't there. I mean, we're not close to Highway 99, we're not close to Highway 5, we're not close to 101. So I don't see that there being a huge, oh my God, I think I'll become a distributor and relocate in Calaveras County. It isn't, it isn't, the market isn't going to be there for Calaveras. And we're not close to, which is why you see your huge transportation hubs along your major interstate. So I'm not seeing what. I don't see that we're going to have a whole bunch of people wanting to be type 11 distributors in M1, two or four. So why cap it now?
Thank you, I agree. Except for that's the reason we can cap it. You know, just to show that, you know, we're willing to move slowly. But any comments, Mr. Toffenelli?
If we're going to put a cap on it, you're going to cap it and you're going to limit the numbers. And we're going to do that. Why don't we limit that and cap it completely out of District 1? It can be in 2, 3, 4 and 5, but we just, if we're going to do that, let's get it out of District 1. If you could see the number of parcels, you can see where this is all going to go. If you look at the map. And I'm not for it. I do have a question, Greg, on your power slide. Where you're showing that they travel 262.4 miles from here to Shasta, California. Shasta County. Where are they transporting it to in Shasta County?
I believe it's Lake Shasta. So they would be transporting it to a distribution facility in that county and arranging for testing. And after it's been tested and the compliance results come back, if the ultimate destination of that particular product is locally and the example that I illustrated, it would be, then it's driven all the way back. So it leaves the local premises, goes out for a distribution to their facility, is tested and then comes all the way back.
So you're telling us that the only testing facility between here and Shasta County is Shasta County. There's no, everybody from Sacramento and everywhere else transports all the way to Shasta to one testing facility. There's none closer.
No, sir, no, there are testing and distribution facilities in several other counties that are, you know, reasonably close. So, you know, that's just the particular example that I was, that it was described to me. But, and no, there are other testing and distribution facilities too outside of our county. That's not the only one.
I didn't see any fees associated with these permits up there. Have you conducted a fee schedule or anything?
We would need to conduct a fee study on this. If the board is inclined to adopt the addendum and propose 1795. We would have to develop a fee for testing and distribution applications.
And then the other question is, are these permits that you're asking for the board to approve, are these annual permits?
They would be subject to annual renewal. So they would file a continuation application, demonstrate compliance is ongoing. And then they would be able to continue operation. So, yeah, yes, sir.
And then. What set of rules are there that would be enacted to take away their permit if they did something such as what you were saying about the type 13 permit where you can't store it and they would have an office with a car or a transport facility? You're saying they can't store it. So what happens if it's late at night and they decide they can't take it to where they need to take it? So they take it to their office that you're talking about in a C2 and is stored in a van or decided, well, it's not safe there. I'm going to put it in the office here until I have a chance to transport it. That's not what you're talking about. They're actually storing it at that point. And that could happen. So if that's a violation and they're caught with violation, is that a violation? They would lose their permit?
So any, any and all operating restrictions that we impose are conditions for that permit. So basically, in the example that you provided, I think it would be something that we would have to examine and enforce if that ever happened. The requirements that the state imposes as well because the permit holders have to comply with all state laws and regulations as well. Essentially, any of the conditions for the permit that are in violation are subject to enforcement.
But we haven't talked about any of those conditions or anything that's not been presented. So that's going to be entirely upon the division of cannabis and planning department? Whatever they decide needs to go on there for those permits?
Well, it's actually a pretty wide collaboration. We have the EMA over in our environmental agency. We have building and code compliance. We have the sheriff's office. You know, we've historically all cooperated very well together and collaborated in conducting inspections, conducting compliance review for issuing permits in the first place. So the Division of Cannabis Control as the permitting agency would be the one that enforces the rules with respect to that permit. But it's really a collaboration amongst several county departments.
The other question I have is, you gave the distance requirements for type elevens when they're on the premises, which would be the same as the grows. But you never referred to any distance requirements for any of these distributaries or testing places within the M1, M2, M3, M4 zones as far as any distance between other parcels or any distance between other buildings that are not being utilized or somebody else's properties or buildings?
Thank you Supervisor Toffenelli, yes. So they have to meet the setback requirements in the ag zones. And then in the proposed chapter subsection 050 F2, it says, "The premises utilized for cannabis testing and our distribution must meet the separation requirements set forth in 1795 090Q." That's the sensitive use we heard a comment on a little earlier. With the terms testing and distribution substituted for cultivation for purposes of this section. So they still have to meet what I call the buffer zones. And they have to meet the setback requirements in the ag zones.
You call a buffer zone, okay.
Yeah, so that would be your sensitive uses. So for instance, parks, schools, there's a list of, I'll find it.
Okay, thank you, Greg.
Ms. Callaway.
Mr. Wayland, some of the emails or what have you calls, I'm sure myself and my colleagues have gotten on distribution regarding the sites, you know, the smell securities. So if you have a type 11 distribution in a 1, 2, 4, whatever. Could you please tell us how that would be? What they would have to do as a distributor to deal with those issues that the public has?
Yes, ma'am, that's an excellent question. So generally speaking, the provision on that in the industrial zones presumes the end result. So they have to maintain carbon filtration, negative ion generation and/or odor control mechanisms that are demonstrated to be effective in reducing cannabis odors. And it specifies that it must be maintained so that cannabis odors cannot be detected by a person of average sensitivity outside of the structure in which cannabis is cultivated. That was a big issue that was discussed at the planning commission. And what's important about that again is that it, the provision assumes the end result. So this is something that they have to accomplish. It's not so much focused on the means, whether they use negative ion generation or carbon filtration. What the point is, is that it has to eliminate cannabis odors such that a person of ordinary sensitivity cannot sense it outside of the structure. And myself, I can say that I have inspected an indoor premises in the county and I could not sense the odor outside of it. I've also, in the planning commission meetings, the building, chief building official was good enough to present and speak to this issue. His experience is also that it's not something that you can readily sense outside of these premises. So what they're doing is effective. And that's one of the conditions that they would have to meet in the M1, M2, 4 and C2 zones. And then also the study of odors that I referred to earlier. It's just sort of my own investigation. While we were going through the process of public hearings before the planning commission, I did ask code compliance staff, I asked the sheriff's office about this issue with respect to odors from an indoor premises or a transport vehicle. And it's a, it's a negative. They, there were no complaints to my recollection on those, on those two issues.
Any further board questions or recommendations? Ms. Feldorf.
Yes, I have a question. So going back to that map that you showed earlier. If the proposal is to remove certain locations in the, on that map, wouldn't that then limit the permit allowed on itself? From them having, then us taking them out? I mean, if we're going to limit the amount of property that they can already get the permit, then why do we need to cap it? It just, it seems, going back to just common sense, it just seems again redundant. And I'm still worried about the monopoly of it. If we cap it rather than just utilize what's on the map. And then just clarifying too, with these permits, or at least especially the 11, they will also have to get approval from the state, just to clarify with the public, right? It's not just us that's going to be given a stamp of approval. It's going to be, they've got us and then apply to the state and have both permits to be able to open this or have that on the premises, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. They would have to both have a state license and a local permit for those.
I just want to make sure that's clear with the public that it's not just us. It's a two-step process.
Yeah, we are asking, if you read the ordinance, we're asking for all the information that's provided to the state at the same time to us for weights and measures.
Yeah, I'm hearing what you're talking about, Amanda. I still would like to go at the limit, but I want to make it clear that I'm open to more. If, hey, we get five great testing facilities or facilities coming in and they're setting up, we could bring it back to this board and we could add in more. What I don't want to have is a free-for-all.
Are we talking testing or distribution?
I'm talking about distribution, I'm sorry, did I say testing?
The general one is.
The general one, not the limited.
Type 11.
The general type 11. I'd be happy to come back and take a look at that in the future.
You know, Al, is there more that you would like to talk about in the ordinance before I? I'm going to adjourn for lunch and then we can come back to public comment.
Are we going to talk testing now or are we going to wait? Because we've just been talking distribution.
Oh, yeah, no, you, that's why I was asking. So if you have questions to testing, we'll do that. And let's see if we can adjourn somewhere for lunch around 12:30. If you're all right with that, Ms. Callaway. And then I think Ms. Feldorf has more to say also. Ms. Callaway.
No, I, I mean, I'll support on the distribution 11, dropping the C2. I don't want to put limits on them. One, because I don't think it's going to be necessary. I don't, it's expensive to set it up, it's expensive to go into the business. And we're not in a location near any major highways. Again, you, when you look at the Highway 5, you look at Tracy, it's one big warehouse because it's at a good location for distribution. I don't see a need to limit it because I don't think we'll find a bunch of distribution centers coming to the county. The market isn't there. And then for distribution type 13, I understood the concerns, but I saw it just because it is only driving. That if somebody wants to set up an office to keep their manifest and it happens to be in Calaveras County, then the rules could be set such as you can't leave your truck with cannabis or your van with cannabis in it. You have to go to another location, it can't be in a C2. But if it's in a regular office or in a C2 area, just like we have the cannabis recreation and medical is in C2. I don't see why we need to put another restriction on for the 13. And as for testing, it's expensive enough.
It's CP, not C2, right? Am I correct? CP for the.
I mean, CP, yeah.
The two different things. I just want to clarify that they allow those in CP and I'm discussing.
Yes, thank you.
No worries. My apologies, Maria, I wasn't trying to interrupt.
And testing lab, I think here's an opportunity to have a testing lab. And testing lab, I think here's an opportunity to have a testing lab. We're talking microscopic amounts of cannabis that are being tested at the moment. The lab people go to the cannabis sites, pull what they have to, and drive to wherever their lab is.
According to Greg, that could be up to six pounds. I don't think that's microscopic, six pounds.
No.
According to him, what he said, what they-
Mr. Whalen, for a testing lab?
It could be up to six pounds for testing.
It was 0.35%, and the maximum batch size is 50 pounds, my recollection of the state regs.
It's not microscopic.
Point, what was it?
0.35%.
Of 50 pounds?
At max, yes.
That's 0.175.
Yeah, where do you get six pounds? I don't see where you get six-
Multiple batches.
His comment earlier was six pounds.
Well, I, Mr. Whalen, are we talking about transporting or are we talking about testing lab?
Testing, that was for testing.
It's 0.175 pounds per lot maximum. Thanks for clarifying that.
That's 16 CCR 5707 harvest batch sampling. The representative sample must weigh 0.35%, so just over a third of a percent of the total harvest batch. The maximum batch size is 50 pounds. So, 0.35%.
That's not six.
So, that's a maximum of 0.75.
The testing center is not going to just do one batch. They're going to bring in, in order to be successful. So, you're going to have more than microscopic amounts in a testing center. Because they're going to be testing different sizes, different batches all over.
At the point, let's say someone has 2,000 pounds they grow on one, on one parcel in a annual year, you divide that by 50 pounds, and we come out with, I believe, you know, 40 batches.
Not microscopic.
And then those, yeah. I concur with Mr. Toffenelli.
Concur what?
That it's not microscopic, it's huge, like my hands.
I have another question.
I couldn't help myself. Sorry.
So, Greg, for Type 13, is that inconcurrent with the state law?
I beg your pardon? Is it?
Type 3, is that in, is that mirroring state law, going parallel with the state law? We're not doing any-
Correct. Yeah, we've made no alterations to what that license would look like. It's a one-to-one thing with what the state regulates.
Thank you for having your line on because mine wasn't. Lots to consider there. I'm making a list of everything everyone brought up so then I can pull the board at the end of the meeting after public comment. At this time, I'm going to recess for lunch, and we'll be back at 1:30.